All this meeting, the order of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
So this is the last night's meeting postponed because of the election. It just made more sense to not have the chaos. So rules of procedure adopted annually to ensure productive meeting. The select board meetings are in the public, not of the public, meaning that the members of the public in attendance are entitled to the opportunity to comment, but the purpose of the meeting is for the board to be able to effectively and efficiently conduct the necessary business to govern the town. All questions and comments are to be directed to the chair, and the rules of procedure indicate that there will be two minutes allotted for comment from any single person on any single topic. There was a procedure posted in the town hall and available for everyone to review.
All right, so we have Bob Jones, Mike Feature, Jessica Van Orte, Tom Collard, Rich Hewitt, and I'm Kristen. Sorry, I don't have your name tags out, but now we all know who you are. I've got everybody in person and online. And I have no additions for tonight. Wasn't sure, does everybody still want to discuss everything that's on the agenda for tonight? Special things under old and new business. There's the town property surveying. I don't know if we got any further with that since last meeting?
No, we haven't.
Okay. Weather cameras, are we prepared to make any decisions on that tonight?
I thought about it a little bit, and I look when I go by the sewer plant, and it looks like we could, yeah, we have a direct line to the firehouse, wouldn't you say, Tom?
I do agree, yes.
So we'll keep that on.
So we, and that one there probably should wait till we get the upgraded fiber network at the sewer plant, and then...
Okay, so table that for now, too?
Well, at least that camera, I don't know if it has any difference whether we buy both of them at the same time or not.
All right. So it looks like we'll just, for now, we can take off town property surveying, but everything else we can just touch on later. Okay.
And I do have an update from the Regional Planning Commission on the MERP, the Municipal Energy Resilience Grant.
Okay.
Just on the next steps for that. It's very short.
Okay.
If you could just plan on the town survey for the next meeting.
Yeah.
We should be able to have something after we get through mid-March here, so.
Yeah, perfect.
Thank you.
All right. So the minutes that need approval are from our last meeting, which was February 18th.
I'll move to approve those minutes.
Okay, thanks.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carried.
All right. So we have no pre-requested. I have no announcements, other than congratulations, you three, welcome back.
Thank you.
But yeah, that's all that I had for announcements.
We're down to zoning administrator.
Nancy.
Nothing from Nancy?
Nancy, oh. Nancy was there, but now maybe she lost her entry. Okay, so we'll say none for now. Maybe she'll come back.
Planning Commission has not. Oh, do you got anything from the Planning Commission? You were out.
Yeah, I'm done now.
Right, and you're all done, so it's all on you, Frank.
We had Planning Commissioner, and we were absent some members, so we are putting off starting the enhanced energy plan up until we have a full slate, which we might have three here tonight that put in some requests. And I'm the interim chairman to be, for just to facilitate starting a meeting and sending out the warning and all that stuff. And then the third item of our agenda of our next meeting is an organizational, where we'll set up who's going to be chairman and stuff like that. That'll be all decided amongst the group. So nothing else much happened, except we definitely miss John immensely, very severely.
If we can take a minute to reflect on John, and that John's about done enough work he did for the community. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, John.
I did have a question on the enhanced energy plan. Where were we back in 2021? It would've been 2021, was it? Because I thought that that got approved at the town level.
Frank, you're the commission now.
Well, Harry did a hell of a job on it, and we did approve something, but there was a technicality on it. And so time went along, and it got just left there. And the state also has some changes. And what's going on now is that there's Rutland Regional Planning Commission, the energy coordinator, energy guy there, has a template that meets all the needs of the state and everything. And he's using that template in Middletown Springs and here and other places. And so that template will be used, so we'll be kosher with everything that we have to have. And then we'll just fatten it up with stuff that is pertinent to Pollet. So it has, it's, we made a decision, because we could still have used the old one and modified that forward, but we decided to jump to this new one because it'd be easier to modify to any state changes and stuff if everybody's doing the same thing. Because we're, really, the key part of it is having the deference, substantial deference factor. Where, right now, since we don't have an approved energy plan by the powers that be, if they came in and want to put windmills on the mountain tops around through here, the state would be the only one with a say on that. With the energy plan, we have the deference that would allow us, in our plan, to basically have a say on where it is. And they have to take that under consideration. Doesn't mean they have to follow it, but it means that we would have a say where before we wouldn't.
So where would I see a copy of this pending enhanced energy plan if I was a citizen that wanted to brought up to speed on what the pending one is?
Is that on the, is that on the USB yet?
I sent them around to all the Planning Commission members before the last meeting, so you have a copy of it.
Right, but did we put it up on your thing?
I haven't gotten the USB to the new chairperson yet, because I didn't know who it was. But if you're the interim chairperson, Frank, I can get you the USB next week.
Okay. And what we're going to do is we'll, we're going to organize our tech ability to, so people will, we're going to interface more. I think, we're going to talk about it, maybe. It might be a good idea, or not, is with the town web guy, so that people can go on and see what's going on.
So it's still in design stage for the planning?
We haven't even, we just basically said we're going to go that direction, and that's all we've done.
Okay, then.
And that's why we're holding off, we were holding off the last meeting because we didn't have anything. We didn't, until we have all the members in place, so we don't have to go, so they're starting from scratch, the same as everybody else.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Anything from the order forming?
I have not heard anything from you. No.
Assessors?
Nope.
Town clerks, memo.
All right, so. So a concerned citizen called to report that the faceplate on the West Pollet Monument is starting to fall off. One letter of interest on Mike's seat there for the Planning Commission. For Bob, there are five excess weight permits.
Actually, six now.
Actually, six excess weight permits for you to sign, Bob. They, we were issued a conveyance of operation for the elevator with violations, which is here. The violations include the repair emergency light and alarm pending. A quote is forthcoming. Maintain MCPs in the machine room, which was completed 3/3. Repair car top light bulb, completed 3/3. Perform overdue CAT 1 test, also completed on the 3rd. Voter participation was 28% yesterday, compared to 34% in 2024, 32% in 2023, 32% in 2022. Our front door really needs some attention. It is not aligning properly, and it would be great if this could be looked into. Historic building or not, we need a properly functioning door. Additionally, the door to the town clerk's office seems to be out of alignment and doesn't always securely lock. Have a wonderful evening, respectfully, Deb. So.
So, well, we'll kick that can to the, to the next meeting and then decide who's in the building. I mean, honestly, we need, we need somebody with, with some skill at the carpentry level that it's very, seems to be very difficult to get a hold of. Does anybody, you know, everybody?
I think Bob Hackett would be a good one to get a hold of.
Okay. Is that somebody, well, we'll talk when we get into the organizational meeting and get, you have a contact forum, or?
Okay.
Whoever's on, gets the big building liaisons. We can maybe have them like that. Have a wonderful night. Anything else, any questions for Deb? Okay, thank you very much, Deb. Technical engineer tonight. Treasurers' report.
Okay. From.
Thank you.
From Julie, there are two warrants this week. Payroll is $15,284.85. Accounts payable $51,865.72. General fund $29,559.27. Highway $31,005.21. Waste water $6,058.609. VLCT has a new series of webinars called Money Matters. Julie will be attending some as they happen. The first was today and was about investments. In addition to the live webinar, Julie will be able to access the recording and the slides for review. We have received the reimbursement for the North Pollet Road grant. Respectfully submitted, Julie Mack. The two motions are for payroll warrant 25053 for $15,284.85, and accounts payable warrant 25054 for $51,865.72.
I move that we approve payroll warrant 25053 and accounts payable warrant 25054.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carried. One thing I don't, Tom, if you're interested in any of these training sessions that come, the town picks up the town.
Yeah, I have to ask, how do you do it? Because when I went in to sign up for that one for the 22nd, it won't let me sign up.
Okay.
So I think we have to sign up through, Deb might need to help with the signup, or I might be able to help. I think we need to have a VLCT login.
That's what I couldn't get through.
Yeah. So I do have one, and Deb has one, but we can...
March 22nd, Mount Player, sign me up, send me away. It's a Saturday, I'd like to visit in person.
Okay, well, we'll talk.
Okay.
Okay.
Excellent.
Okay.
Thank you, Mike. Did we happen to have a number on the reimbursement on the North Pollet Road grant?
We do. I don't have it handy, but I have it.
Okay.
So I can, I'll look it up and send it.
Thank you.
Yeah. It was, I don't want to say it on, I don't want to be quoted on television.
Okay.
Not with the correct number.
Thank you.
But I can get it for you.
Okay, anything else for the Treasurers' report tonight?
Nope.
Emergency management.
I don't have anything.
Nothing from Bob this week. Health officer Jennifer, do you have anything to share tonight?
I do. We continue to have a problem with trash burning by a particular resident in West Pollet, same one as before. I have been in touch with the state, and they are actually going to initiate enforcement. That's as of the email that I got today. And I just want to point, bring this to your attention. This is from her email, that municipalities have the ability to create more stringent ordinances on open burning. And if that occurs, then I can ticket trash burning. So it has been a problem, you know, here and there, but I think it's definitely worth you guys considering. So I will keep you posted on what happens, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
We don't, as a town, have any trash burning?
Not any ordinance. We default to the state.
So twenty seven years, okay.
I can't hear.
Did you hear that, Jennifer?
A little, not very well.
Okay, Tom was asking if we had an ordinance, and I said, no, we don't have an ordinance. We default to the state regulations on trash burning.
Right, and the only thing that the state allows to be burned is basically wood. And you can't file a kind of thing, you can't burn trash, can't burn construction debris. It's just wood, and I don't even think they want paper. I can check on that. So, and there are, I have run into it a few times. I think a lot of people aren't aware of that, or aren't, don't particularly care or come across that, so I'll leave it up to your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Frank?
Yeah. Jennifer, in the area of where I live, I got out of the car frequently this, over the last few weeks, and had the smell of, it wasn't wood burning, it was something else burning, and someone may be burning it in their wood stove. And is there an ordinance against burning trash in your wood stove as well?
Yes. And also, if we're talking about the same person, they had a fire just within the last week that I was sent photo that was taken at 4 something AM. So they're doing it in the middle of the night.
Okay. All right, so let us know how you make out about that, and we'll, we'll keep in mind that that's something, if we need to be more strict, we would have to, have to adopt an ordinance.
Okay, thank you. So yeah, it was sent at 4:49 AM, the photo that was sent to me.
Okay. Thank you, Jennifer. Anybody else have any questions for Jennifer? Thank you, Jennifer.
You're welcome.
Waste water. They had a few issues with the heaters, but they've been resolved. You can see there's a bill in there.
Yeah, and I attended the, I attended the meeting on the, on the grant that the Regional Planning Commission has to work on the plans for the upgrade. And at an upcoming select board meeting, we'll want to, we'll want to have, Jill wants to come, and Devin wants to come from the Regional Planning Commission, so that as a select board, we can have a discussion. Because where they're at right now is they've got a couple different options for the sludge storage tank, and they want the feedback from the select board on how we'd like to proceed. But Devin can't come to the one in two weeks, so we might want to plan it for the one after that.
Okay, because I know we, we talked about not having it this week, the following, but that'll work.
Yeah, he can't make that, so I think we could schedule it. We can see if he can make the one after that. They have to decide by, I think it's some, by the end of March. So as long as we have the meeting, that would be, that would be very early April, but I think they would be fine with that.
April 1st, so, okay. That would be our next available meeting, that Devin can join us. Okay. So we'll keep, we'll keep that going, keep that communication open. Anything from the facilities before, besides this door? Nothing right now, okay. Was Julie have anything from the school board?
No.
Town property, we're not going to discuss this time. We're going to work on that for the next one, okay?
Yeah, Sue and I, we just got coordinated a day to get together, and I told her on my end it'd be more like mid-March.
Okay.
So hopefully next week.
Okay, great, thank you for your help on that, Sue. The weather cameras?
Did we ever get any cheaper quotes? Because we had asked him to look into if he had any, like, less powerful cameras.
Did he come back with any other options, or not?
I don't, I'll have to double-check. I don't think so, but I can, I can circle back around with him.
Okay.
And I'll, when I get those, I can, I'll send him along.
Okay, so, so it's going to be like, what, $2,000 almost per setup? Frank?
Yeah, and he was questioning, I don't think he has familiarity with the infrared or the temperature sensing, which is, I think, key to see if the roads are icing, whether or not you want to salt or not. It's, that, so I don't know. He seemed to think it's going to cost more, but he didn't really have a handle on that.
So we'll just keep, keep this on the topic for discussion, but not act on it tonight.
Well, Kristen, looks like someone's in the waiting room again.
Is that old business?
We had the old business for the municipal energy resilience plan, the MERP grant. I got an email, so I had told everyone last meeting or the meeting before that Jeremy from Rutland Regional Planning Commission was thinking of doing an RFP together with a bunch of towns. And he wrote an email late last week saying that he has an update on doing the MERP projects as a group. After quite a bit of digging, it looks like the best way forward is a twofold path of grant admin and then putting out an RFP, request for proposals. First, the Regional Planning Commission will offer MERP grant administration services for the implementation grants. This will cover doing the grant reporting, record keeping, closeout reports, and helping interface with the contractors. This will also include creating an RFP and putting the projects out to bid. The Regional Planning Commission will create an RFP on behalf of all participating towns. The winning bid will be the one with the lowest cost. The bidders will provide each town with their itemized portion of the total bid. Each town can then choose to accept or reject the bid and will contract individually with the winning bidder. Please let me know if your town would like to have the Rutland Regional Planning Commission provide grant admin services. The cost will be somewhere between 5% to 8% of the MERP award, or if you have any questions. And I just wrote back to him immediately and said that we usually do the Regional Planning Commission as our grant admins, but that I would just double-check with all of you. I strongly suggest...
Are you making that informal motion?
Yes. I strongly suggest, I move that we accept the Regional Planning Commission as our grant administrators for the MERP grant.
I'll second that. Is there any more discussion?
Frank has discussion.
I think you should nail down what the price is going to be, because that's going to come out of the grant totally, and that leaves what we have.
Frank, didn't you understand what they said?
They said 5% to 8% of the grant.
Of the award.
Which is a big amount of money.
Who's going to do it?
Yeah, but he's working on a lot of other, he's working on a lot of other towns.
Are you going to do it if they don't?
The question is, is there efficiencies for the fact that he's working with a lot of other towns? And basically, who's, could it be less? Because there's more towns involved for the amount of time he's putting in, because he's putting in the same amount of time for all the towns as he would do for one. That's my key question.
That's, that's, that's your key question.
Yeah.
But the realization is, it's going to cost 5% to 8% of whatever comes in to do the project, correct?
Yeah.
And there's nobody here that's going to do it. So if they don't do it for us, it's not going to get done. That's the realization of this, okay?
Well, I'm not, I understand that fully.
You understand that, so there's really no more discussion.
No, but since it's happening with all the towns, if there's a, can all the towns share that 5% to 8% cost, which is normally what they share?
Each town gets, has to pay 5% to 8% of whatever their total comes in for the job.
Right, but if he's just doing, doing it once, and then it's handing out to all the towns, that's the question, which is different than just working.
Then if he was just doing it once, it would be 50% or 30%. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We still haven't voted on that motion.
Have a motion made in second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carried.
Okay, I'll just let him know that we are all behind this.
Yes, indeed, great.
Is there any old, other older unfinished business?
Yep.
Now, new business. Did you use a new computer?
Well, I did, but I am wondering what my budget is.
You need a, you need a computer, so.
Okay, so do I have approval to purchase a computer? There's about $10,000 in the budget for computers. I'm not going to spend $10,000 on a new computer, but do I have approval to select a computer?
Which one do you feel is going to be the best, so you need?
I found a Dell, which is similar to this, and I found a Mac. And I'm just, I'm just personally torn between which one.
I thought the last time we had our meeting, we said anywhere between the dollar bills that you shared.
I didn't share any.
I thought we had between $1,000 and $1,500, and the one you were looking at was around $1,300.
That's good memory. I mean, that's exactly what I was thinking, but I don't remember having that conversation.
Could you get one that you feel will do your job for under $1,500?
Yes.
Or you buy it?
Great.
Do we have to put that in form of a motion?
Go ahead, Tom.
I'll make a motion that we approve a computer purchase up to $1,500.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carried. Thank you for doing the research on that.
Thanks for supporting me.
Okay, the only thing on new business is nature conservancy purchase. Did everybody get the information regarding that? And at this point, with that information, the parcels are still private until the deal goes through, so.
Do we need to take an action on that?
No.
I don't think we do.
It's just informational.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing there any action we had to take. I just wanted to double-check.
Does anybody else have anything under new business that we needed to discuss or bring up?
Mike?
Yes.
When I took the name plates off the tables to set up for voting, there's a, there's a piece of mail in those name plates for you, and I don't know what it is.
Oh, that's Rutland Rural?
No, it's right behind you. Right there. I was thinking they'd go back off and back onto the table.
Okay.
So that's your mail.
Julie can file this. I review it, I can file after.
Let me look, okay.
February 20. No, that's probably a contract.
I think that's back for you. Does that go for Deb?
We can look the guy up.
Oh yeah, we did sign the warrants. We moved to sign them, we just never actually signed them.
Thank you.
This happens from time to time.
Have another question for Jessica?
Yes.
So Jessica, I did email Meg Campbell, but I haven't heard back. Have you heard back from her at all?
I have not heard back from her either.
Okay.
Well, that's right here. We probably should copy that and pass it on to the, to the Planning Commission so that they can look through the applicants. As in the past, we can have a copy of the applicants. They can have a copy of the applicants that they can look over.
Yeah, and the previous applicant, which was Linda, I sent around to the Planning Commission and to the select.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, we kind of discussed Linda's being, we were fine with Linda. John, just the other day, I was over there, and I said, you'd like to join? And he says, sure, and so we had him do that, and we submitted it. But the... But the thing is, is that, we have, Kristen, we have one more person who's interested in the planning commission?
Um, yes, I got Leon Corey emailed yesterday and expressed interest in serving on the planning commission as well as an alternate for the DRB.
So we have three slots open and three, three applicants.
We'll give the, a lot of time till the next planning commission meeting, and then you guys can look over whatever there is for applicants, and recommend if there's more than three, and then we can move.
We don't have more than three applicants.
Well, by the time the next planning commission comes up, you may have more than three applicants. You can look through them, and then, and then turn them over to the select board, and then at our next meeting, we can decide to appoint whoever you need. That's the way we've done it in the past with the committees and stuff like that.
And the next meeting will still be before your next meeting, right? So we'll be in time?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, the eighteenth, that'll be before the twenty-fourth, which will be the next planning commission meeting.
Well, the twenty-fourth will be the next planning commission?
Yeah, the fourth Monday.
Okay.
So April first.
So they'll, so then it'll be the April first meeting will be the one, after the planning commission looks them over, makes their recommends, then at the April first meeting, we'll-
Yeah. I wonder though, since they already looked over the first person, if we might appoint her already, because, I mean, she applied before the deadline of applying, and these other two people just recently did. I mean, it might be helpful for them to have one more person at their next meeting.
And we discussed the Linda one, and we're fine with it.
Well, that's gonna come up at the organizational meeting.
That's true, that will be the organizational meeting.
Okay, so, perfect, we'll, we'll come back to that. Circle back, is there any other new business that? Public comment? Sue?
I just wanna thank the select board for having the confidence in me to appoint me to the library board, and I wanna thank the voters of Polit for having their confidence in me to, uh, have me on the library board. And I do, um, commit to being on a board where I'll promote transparency and, uh, colla- collaborative working, and, um, I look forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, so, Jessica's stepped out, so I'm stepping in, we're doing another energy event, which is a training session, and so we'll be using a library for, for that, and I'm putting that together, and we have all the materials we need. I'm just, we have a, there's an, efficiency Vermont says they don't do every year at a place. They wanna spread it around, so they're unavailable, that they recommended somebody else, and I'm emailing with them now.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second that. All in favor? And, post, carried.
Okay. Alright, to the next one. Um, would you like to call in, should we call the next meeting to order?
Uh, we gotta, the office will run, right?
Well?
Swearing in is the first thing?
Before we can even call it to order. So, whenever you're ready, Deb.
We... I warned the org meeting to start at eight, but it's, I think we can probably start. And everybody we need to swear in is here, I think.
So, um, if you'll all raise your right hand, those who are being sworn in right now, um, and stand. Okay, so, we'll do the, um, select board first, so you can wait just a second. Do you, Tom Collard, Jessica Van Or, and Michael Beecher solemnly swear or affirm that you will be true and faithful to the state of Vermont, and that you will not directly or indirectly do any act or thing injurious to the constitution or government thereof, so help you God, or under pains and penalty of perjury?
I do.
I do.
Okay, that's your oath of allegiance, now your oath of office. Do you, Tom Collard, Jessica Van Or, and Mike Beecher solemnly swear or affirm that you will faithfully execute the office of select board one year, select board three years, uh, for the state of Vermont, and will therein do equal right and justice to all persons to the best of your ability and judgment according to law, so help you God, or under pains and penalty of perjury?
I do.
Okay. Corey? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will be true and faithful to the state of Vermont, and that you will not directly or indirectly do any act or thing injurious to the constitution or government thereof, so help you God, or under pains and penalty of perjury? Do you, Corey Yale, solemnly swear that you will faithfully execute the office of library trustee, and will therein do equal right and justice to all persons to the best of your judgment and ability, according to law, so help you God, or under pains and penalty of perjury?
I do.
Okay. And Susan was sworn in earlier today, she's all set. Okay, so, you gave them-
I gave them.
Or other local official.
Okay, so we're the local-
Yeah, we're, that's our signature, I think, it's March the-
Oh, I gotta date it?
Day of. Well, it has a spot for it, so I stuffed that there.
Oh, I didn't see an X.
No? Well, then you better-
It was a test.
Yeah.
I failed.
Good, good job, you passed the test.
Glad to see that I'm gonna get that pain right out of the ass.
That just means yours never- No. Nope, I just had three. Okay.
Thanks for letting me have the pen back so I can do it correctly.
If you don't date it, that means that you actually swear into the select board forever.
Uh, I will date it for today, but thanks for asking.
Good to be on it. This is an indefinite rule.
Yeah, forever and ever.
My father's birthday.
Happy birthday. Okay, so, um, since there's no chair, this is my claim to fame where we're gonna call this meeting to order at seven forty-one. Um, okay, do we have a motion to appoint a chair to our board?
I'll nominate Mike Beecher.
So does that a motion in a second? Okay, Mike Beecher.
Okay.
There you, there you go. Okay, take it away. Um, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Prove. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, good job.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, alright, great, well, all you, Mike.
Alright, pass it right out to me. Alright, now we gotta nominate Mike Beecher.
That's my one moment in, in lights, every year.
Mike's chair.
I nominate Bob Jones.
I'll second that.
Rich can have it.
Alright.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carried. Sewer liaisons.
So last year, we had, um, Mike and Jessica were the liaisons to the sewer treatment plant.
I'd like to continue being, since, since I've been meeting with the people about the upgrades.
Yeah, I would, I would like to stay on that too, so I think that's a good-
Well, I'll make a motion, both of them to stay on that.
Alright.
I'll second that.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in, carried.
Alright, next up, we have highway, which our running highway guru has been rich, but does anybody else wanna take a stab at the, we've always had two.
Right. Barbara?
Come on, come on, don't, don't be-
Yeah.
Bob Jones, back, back on the highway department. Alright, so that, who, you two were excited about making those motions?
Yeah, I'll move that, um, Rich and Bob be the highway liaisons.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post, carried. Building liaisons.
Kristen, the, the video is working for the meeting?
Oh, that's 'cause I didn't turn it back on, lots of ons and offs. We're back.
Thank you. Building liaison.
What do you think, Tom?
I don't think I'm good at it.
What's a building liaison consist of, besides the front door, that I've already got three young ladies boxing my ears that have fixed?
Building liaison is like the point person for when any sort of tasks need to be looked into for the town buildings.
Okay.
So, certain examples have been when somebody says, oh, the bush behind the town hall is overgrown, and we need to find somebody to come and deal with it, or the roof is leaking at the library, or the sewage, yeah, the pipe is frozen in the basement.
I think that's a great place for me to start.
Okay.
Anything to do with those? Jessica, do you wanna talk around with Tom on that?
Um, yeah, I can, that might not be bad, since I've also been working with the MERP grant, and that's gonna involve the buildings.
No, that would be absolutely.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know as many people as you know, Tom, but-
I'll second that.
Your forces combined.
Yep.
I bet little different people will figure it out.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post, carried. Treasures liaison.
That was me last year, I'm willing to keep partying.
Alright, good.
I'll make that motion. Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carried.
Okay, so in the, um-
Last one, we, we lumped all of them in.
Yeah, so last year, so I pulled up last year's organizational meeting minutes and just updated it for this year, so I've got everything kinda pre-written here. Um, so the following, it's on page six of the town report, is what we're looking at right now, and it is the filing individuals and entities to one-year term positions. So I'll just read through them real quick, so attorney Merrill Bent, is town attorney still, Ed Cleveland was listed as grand juror, Platt Herrick Jr., fence viewer, Bob Morelino, emergency management director, Jennifer Sullivan, public health officer, Tim Waite, the inspector of coal, wood, shingles, and lumber, and wearer of coal and tree- warden? Wearer of coal and the tree warden, so sorry, those are many things. Uh, Frank Nelson, our energy coordinator, Bob Jones, pound keeper for large animals, Dave Ricard, and Tom Covino, pound keeper, pound keeper for small animals.
So that probably just needs to go to just Tom Covino, I think, probably not.
Okay. Um, so the select board, it's not listed in the book, but it's, we talked about it last year, so the select board is the liquor and tobacco control board, and the sewer commissioners, as well as the local cannabis commission.
Right.
So we gotta put you guys on there for that as well. Um, Lenny Gibson has been the solid waste alliance communities representative. Julie is our tax collector, and the Rutland Herald has been our official news publication. So, those, um-
We haven't had any of those people that were listed say that they're not interested.
Deb?
Um, with the liquor and cannabis, it is, it's also now tobacco.
Yes, I said liquor, yep, liquor and tobacco, and sewer and cannabis, yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, we haven't, we haven't heard any feedback from anybody-
Haven't heard that anybody doesn't wanna do it.
I'll say that to good-
They did, and if they read in the book, they would see that they were at last year, so. Sometimes, they have to step up if they don't wanna.
That's why I asked the question.
Yeah.
Silence is acceptance.
General rule is, if you don't say you don't wanna do it, it means you still wanna do it.
That's why I'm sitting here tonight.
Right.
So what's the mo-
So the motion would be to appoint the following individuals and entities to their one-year term positions, listed below, as well as on page six of the twenty twenty-four annual town report, and then it lists all the people that I just read.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carried.
So, um, are we not, so the planning commission, Rick Sassa and Mark Frost, um, were both, they were expi-, they expired this year for the planning commission, and then there's the additional vacancy, right? That's what the book said. So there's, yeah, the three spots.
Well, there's, there are two expired, but there are three people who have left the planning commission.
Right.
So those three spots will-
Need to be.
Besides Rick and-
Rick and Mark, so we could probably start with just making Rick and Mark do it again, 'cause they have a grumble, I-
Right, so to-
I haven't heard them grumble.
No.
So to reappoint Rick and Mark.
Yep.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carried.
Okay. Um, for the DRB, uh, there was Tom Crowber's position expired-
Right.
This year, so I, Tom, John Weiss sent an email out. Um... So, John said to, asked to let the board know that Tom Crowber has expressed interest in being reappointed to another one-year term, and Leon Corey has expressed interest in being an alternate. So.
Okay.
If wish, if you wish, we could, you could make the motion to reappoint Tom for a two-year term and appoint Leon for a one-year alternate term to the development review board.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carried.
Okay. So the next one that we had was the primary representative and the alternate representative from Polit to the Rutland Regional Planning Commission and transportation advisory council. So last year was, we had, so John Sabatka, but he also had expressed that-
He didn't, he didn't want it.
He had already stepped back from that.
And the alternate was Harley.
And Harley, and they both-
Also stepped back.
Have stepped back, so.
Who on the planning commission wants to do it now? Or do we wanna appoint our road foreman? We've talked in the past about appointing our road foreman as the representative to the transportation, because he would, um, it had been John's, um, John had thought that it would be a good idea if it was the road foreman, 'cause a lot of other road foremen from other towns are the representatives. And you can attend virtually, you wouldn't have to drive down there. Is it, Kristen, is it just one appointment for both, the transportation and the Rutland Regional Planning Commission?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, it's not two anymore, it's just one?
We've always done, it's always been a packaged thing, I'm sure that we could break it up. But they generally ask from the town of Polit, they ask for just a primary and secondary, or rather, primary and alternate. But I'm sure that it could be one for each.
I think we should at least let this, kinda let, let the planning commission get settled out a little bit, explain to them that we've had a lot of vacancies in the planning commission, and we'll get someone appointed as soon as someone's, is interested.
Okay, so nothing-
Do you wanna, Frank?
Not yet.
How come?
Because here's a suggestion, is if Jessica came in on that as well, then that would clue the select board in on everything that was going on, especially on the grants and the, and the developments on that. Just saying.
If Jessica was interested, she would've already said, oh, I'll take it.
I'm the liaison to three things, I think, I think the sewer plant and the MERP grant are gonna keep me quite busy.
Is they, are they still on Tuesday nights up there, on the Rutland Regional?
Yeah.
I, I'm not sure what they're on, I, 'cause I haven't been going to them.
Oh, you wanna?
Are you interested?
I, I, I don't mind filling in for a short time while we-
Temporarily?
Board gets somebody on, but I just don't want it to conflict with, with this, and I think it's Tuesday nights.
I get the emails from Devon.
Yeah, I can, I'll also check emails and see if I see any.
But it's just an offer-
We'll just kick that can a little bit because of the situation.
I think that's a good idea.
Frank?
I'm doing the rail trail, and still looking for an alternate on that, if anyone's interested.
Alternating, but you wanna occupy every Tuesday.
Next second, every second Wednesday.
They're not alternating. They end up being the first Tuesday of every month, I think.
Oh, so it's-
It's a hidden asset.
Doesn't work.
It's gonna be a conflict- It's going to be a conflict, so...
Okay.
But I think we should, on the transportation part, if no one here at the board has spoke with them in reference to that, that would be a good conversation to ask them if he'd be a part. Because I think having it, maybe not as an alt, you know, as a primary, but maybe as an off, you know, whatever his choices, whatever he can give.
We've brought it up to him in the past.
I think this time, I don't think that's a suggestion we need to make.
Okay, then. Then we'll just...
Yeah, we'll figure out how we can, can fill those, as everything starts to settle out with the appointments and stuff.
Very good.
Frank? So, the planning commission going forward will have, you'll be handling those spots around the regional through the road commissioner and somebody on the select board? So, the planning commission won't be doing that, a member from there?
No, that's, no.
No?
There, right now, there's nobody appointed to either of those two committees until we get our feet back and under our weather, planning commission, et cetera, and find somebody that's interested in going. Because if we just point somebody that's not really interested in going, they're not going to get anything out of it, and they may or may not show up. So, that's the same as having no one, so...
I, I missed something. Did Linda get discussed here?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay.
That's about the only thing we have left. Correct?
Uh, we need to appoint, is there still, do we still need the representative to the Otter Creek?
Yeah, we do. It's only meeting a couple times a year now, just for like oversight, but I'm willing to keep doing it.
Okay.
I think there's a form we'll have to fill out, but I'll bring that to the next meeting.
Right, okay.
But we can, we can make the appointment now.
Okay.
I'd make that a form of a motion.
Great.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. I'm like, anybody?
Deb, go to the chair.
Trying to make eyes at, staring at one of you down, like, come on.
Do we need to reappoint yearly to the rail trail council, or not?
If you want to.
Nobody, nobody's running against him, so...
I mean, I don't, some of these ones need you to be appointed every year and have a paper, and I don't know if the mail...
I haven't seen anything from the rail trail.
Vice chair up there anyway, so...
Well...
So, you'll, you'll hear about it if we have...
Well, yeah, so let us know if you need to be reappointed.
I was going to say, I can second that motion. We can make this official, where, no?
Just put it through, and we got it.
Uh, okay, what is that?
It was to appoint, uh, reappoint Frank Nelson to the, um, rail trail council.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried.
Seal the deal, Frank.
So, the next one, gotcha, yep. Way ahead of you there. Um, rules of procedure. We need to reappoint those. We like those still?
They're awesome.
Oh, I need to, quick little aside, but I would like to type up your pre-meeting blurb so that it can live on. We've gotten a couple of requests from other towns, um...
It's hard to get dog-eared anyways.
What's that?
It says it's hard to get a little dog.
I know. I'm like, gosh, that thing is really, that thing is held up.
I think that should be patented, like...
It wouldn't hurt if we, if we just posted that also on our website. I mean, I know the whole rules of procedure are there somewhere, but that, if that was on the website somewhere, I think that would be helpful for people.
Yes, I will type this up, and then we can have it and save it, and then it will be there. I'll make a copy of it before we go.
Thank you.
Okay, so, did somebody move to adopt the rules of procedure again?
I did.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried.
Okay. I believe that takes us to public comment, or to circling back around to planning commission.
Right. So, the planning commission had reviewed Linda's application, Frank?
The planning commission.
Letter of interest, excuse me.
Yeah, it was a discussion. Linda was there, and, uh, nobody seemed to have any problem with it, and we're, we're anticipating that she would be, uh, on the planning commission at our next meeting.
Okay.
I don't see any reason not to. I'll move that we appoint Linda Linton to the planning commission, to one of the three open spots.
Do you have a second?
I can second that.
Any more discussion?
Which one is she filling? Because they have expiration dates to the terms on that.
Um, aren't they, uh, I don't have...
The one with the most time.
I was just going to say, the three-year.
Because she jumped on it first.
The twenty-year one.
She's clearly the most excited in fact.
She gets the biggest load.
They're all three-year.
They're not elected, it's appointed.
Oh, it's all appointed. Oh, okay.
So, they're all three-year, um...
That'd be good.
So, Jessica's expired, that would expire in twenty-seven. If, if Rick and Mark just go, you know, restart another three, and then Linda could finish out the term of the...
Till twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven, the vacant.
All right. Yep.
Does that sound...
Two years.
Two years.
Two years, that sounds good.
That's a nice introductory, thank you.
Introductory stint, see if you want to keep that in afterwards.
Yes.
Any more discussion? All in favor? All right, post? Carried. Thank you, welcome.
I do have one question. When do the, uh, say, in the meeting at Rutland?
Huh?
The meetings.
The Rutland Regional Planning Commission? If, to that?
They're in Rutland?
In Rutland in person, or you can actually zoom in?
Yeah.
Well, if you know a cheap hotel, yeah, where they made it, well, yeah.
Lobster on room service or something like this.
Are you interested in the Rutland Regional?
Hmm?
Are you interested in the Rutland Regional, too?
Yeah, I think I am, but I'm just thinking about, if you go all the way to Rutland, I'm not coming back at night.
And you can, you can attend virtually.
You can zoom in.
You can zoom in.
I think you guys could put her on right now, since you have done, done the deal.
They'll put you on now if you want to do it.
It's a good idea to have somebody on it, because...
Do you want to just, you want to just attend a couple of the meetings, a meeting or two, and see what, what goes on? Okay.
Because nobody knows.
Frank, you can make sure that she has the information of, of how to get, how to get the, set up so she can attend that.
I mean, Devon...
Don't look at Jessica, Frank, it's on you now.
Devon always sends them to me, but do you not get them, Frank? Okay.
You can go to the website. You'll see it there, too.
And if you reach out to Devon, near you.
Oh, I'll talk to Devon.
Yeah, and then he can put you on the list.
Send down all the two, we're going to be doing, two, you, a trooper, so we got you.
Okay.
And how, and you're not doing it now?
Well, so...
No, we can't, because it's on a Tuesday night.
Yeah, it conflicts with select board, so none of us can do it.
And if I may, we're getting a little bit distracted, so we're not doing this tonight.
The road commissioner, though, is just getting in my mind.
But we're not doing this tonight, Frank. We're doing, there's a form.
We have a primary and alternate, so we send down the two forms, and then we'll decide what we do.
Right, but we don't have the form tonight, so...
No, but we can have them get them down here to forms.
Yes, they'll get them to us.
Right.
But right now, we're not discussing that.
Anything other business that we need to accomplish tonight?
Nope.
Um, is there, is there one other, isn't there something to do with, uh, spending policy or something like that that we have to establish? Have to talk to Julie about that.
The, in the, um, handbook, there is a policy.
That, that is in, is part of the, of our, the one we already established, right?
Oh, do we, do we redo our ethics policy every year, or not?
We'll have to ask Mike, who's our ethics liaison.
I remember there's some policy that we have often had to redo each year, or just everybody signs again or something, but we'll find out.
We'll work it out.
Our, our conflict of interest and ethics policy?
Yeah. I'm not sure. We can do it next meeting if we have to.
We sure can.
If we can, do you think you'd be able to shoot a little message to Julie? She seems to pretty, be pretty good at remembering that kind of stuff, too.
Spent, on the spending policy?
On any of those other policies that, that she's asked us to sign that we've sometime neglected.
Us? Okay. I'll certainly do that. Ask Julie. Yes?
One last thing.
Okay, uh, with the MERC thing, there was this discussion of the library having a participation in the, in the planning commission, in a committee, and, uh, at the last meeting, I brought that up. I was appointed as the planning commission liaison. Does the library have a liaison to the committee, or, uh, to said committee, or... Is that going to still be formed?
Yeah, we don't, we don't have to form the committee yet until such time as the Rutland Regional Planning Commission sends out the RFP. So...
I'll make a motion. We adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried. Thank you all. Have a great evening.